Mayor Van Gordon.
I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Here. Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pishanary.
Here, and thank you.
All right, we have one item for the work session. Oh, and I apologize. Counselor Woodrow is excused for the evening. We have updated recreational vehicles as temporary housing with Katie Carroll presenting. And while Katie's coming up, I thought I would, since it's Talk Like a Pirate Day, share my favorite pirate joke. What is a pirate's favorite element? Hit it, Neil.
Our gun?
No, it's gold, you fool.
Yeah.
That wasn't on the agenda.
That's what let me defer. I didn't ask Katie. I'd like, I gave Neil the answer ahead of time.
I was thinking, I was like, are.
For good reason.
Yeah. So Katie, get us back on track.
Right. Hi, everyone. My name is Katie Carroll and I'm the city's housing analyst. So the item I have for you tonight is an update on the city's temporary allowance of RV occupancy. So a little bit of background reminder on this, in October of 2020, council adopted a resolution that temporarily suspends enforcement of city codes that would otherwise not allow occupying an RV. And so basically what the resolution allows for is for RVs to be occupied as temporary housing when they are located on private property. And when the RV occupants and property owners are complying with guidelines that the city has set, which are an attachment to your packet tonight. So council adopted this in response to displacement from the Holiday Farm Fire, the COVID pandemic, and then a regional shortage of temporary affordable housing options. And council's reviewed this twice since then and most recently decided to continue it through spring of next year. So at its last check-in on this, in May, council provided direction to staff on two things. First, to count the number of complaint, track the number of complaints related to RV occupancy on private property. And then to try and figure out how many RVs are being used as temporary housing under these guidelines. So that would be outside of the overnight parking program, mobile home parks and RV parks, and then campgrounds. So that is what I'm back to talk to council about tonight. And then staff has one question for council. So can we pull up the slide? There we go. So in response to council's first request, this is showing the city's code complaint data. So this is for 2018 through the end of August of this year. And what is shown here are the number of complaints that included a complaint about RV occupancy on private property. And this is visualized by quarter. So there hasn't been an increase in the number of complaints of this nature since the resolution was adopted in fall of 2020 as compared to recent prior years. I do want to make one distinction though. So there is a distinction to be made between complaints and violations. So the city might respond to a complaint about RV occupancy and find that it's actually in compliance with the city's guidelines, which wouldn't result in a violation. Or alternatively, they might respond to a complaint about a different matter and subsequently find an RV that is being occupied that isn't in compliance with the city's guidelines that could be a violation. So staff is tracking both complaints and violations moving forward. So we can provide an update to you on those at your next check-in on this. Were there any questions about this before I move on to other part? Yeah.
I, yes. Is there a breakdown on the number of complaints on RVs on and off of either private or commercial property? In other words, how many of these complaints were lodged about RVs just out on a public street?
So this wouldn't include complaints on, in the public right of way. That's something that the police would respond to. So this is what code enforcement would respond to.
Okay, so this is only complaints about RVs on private property?
Yeah, correct, which is what these guidelines cover. So guidelines don't cover.
When, when was the policy instituted? Was that 20?
Yeah, October of 2020.
Okay, that, that explains the, some of the decline anyway. Okay.
Yep. Any other before I move on? Okay, great. Can we go to the next slide then? So then in response to council's second request, which was to try and figure out how many RVs are being occupied in this way. Staff has come up with three options and requests council's direction on how to move forward. So these are further detailed in your packet. I'm going to go over them and then I have one other slide that has the question that staff has for council related to this. So option A is essentially for the city to continue responding to the resolution as it has. So responding to complaints, issuing violations is necessary. And then staff would check in with council to provide that updated code enforcement data. And this wouldn't require any additional administration time because staff would just be continuing to do what it has been. However, this would not result in a count of RVs being used as temporary housing. And then before I move on to option B and C, I just want to note that under both of those, staff would still plan to provide updated code enforcement data to council. It's just not written clearly in the slide. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. So option B would be for the city to implement a registration system. So it would be a simple and free registration system for RVs that are being used as temporary housing. And this would allow the city to begin to count the number of RVs that are being used in this way. But staff doesn't expect that it would result in a complete count. Staff is estimating that this would take around 20 hours to implement. And so that would include setting up the registration system, doing some outreach to known RV occupants, some advertising on a webpage and the city's housing newsletter, and then bringing a new resolution to council that updates those guidelines and requires registration. This is the option that staff is recommending in your packet. And the primary reason for that is that this would provide the city with a way to get in touch with folks who are using RVs under this measure when the city decides to discontinue it because it's temporary. And then option C would be for the city to conduct a sample survey to try and quantify the number of RVs that are being used as temporary housing. So the preliminary idea for how to do this would be to identify some sample areas of Springfield, review aerial photographs in those areas to try and identify potential RVs and then do an on-the-ground field work follow-up to determine if those are RVs. And if so, whether they are being occupied or just stored. So staff has identified some challenges to this approach that make us think this wouldn't result in an accurate count. So doing a sample survey requires making assumptions and kind of the big one here is how RVs are distributed. Another challenge would be determining if RVs are occupied or just being stored. So that might require making multiple visits at different times of day to do that assessment. And then finally, if RVs aren't visible from the public right of way, they might be missed or it might be more difficult to assess whether or not they're occupied. And so there's kind of a sub-choice within option C if council would like to proceed with that. And that's how the field work for this might be done. So staff could try and find an intern to do that work or use staff time to do it or put out a request for a proposal to try and find a contractor to do it. And those would all obviously vary in staff time and cost. But staff is estimating this would take around one, potentially 100 to 200 hours to.
Joe.
Thank you. On, I mentioned option B and I'm just thinking about how we go about do our business. And I keyed in on the word educate on guidelines. And I know typically staff is complaint-driven responses, which I have no problem with. But in this particular case, it's not, it wouldn't, in my mind, it wouldn't be an enforcement action, but more of an education and be able to get the word out and allow staff and in fact, request staff to, in their travels, to when they see an RV that's not listed on a registration or an address that doesn't have it registered, to simply approach the residents and drop off a sheet of paper, giving them that information and letting that, those, that residence know that the RV needs to be registered. I think that, to me, that would be pretty efficient. And I don't think it would take hardly more than a few minutes when they're, you know, if you've got a complaint that's, that's happening three doors down and on their way, they see an RV parked next to a house. To me, there'd be no reason why they couldn't stop at that house, drop off the paperwork and get that word out to that person and target that, target those folks. In addition to all the different ways you've already said.
Okay, Cory.
Thank you. So thank you for this. And I also absolutely support option B. And I know we're coming back to this in the spring. And, and I think we talked about this originally with this and we talked about the extension. Because absolutely people need doors and shelter. And I want, I think part of the reason we want to track this is because we don't, we want to move people into more permanent housing. And so we need to know what the need is and we need to know what the barriers are. And so even an incomplete, incomplete count starts to get us there in terms of understanding what the need is, understanding if it's diminishing or if it's not, or any of those things. So option B, and I just wanted to just say that, you know, as we think about why we were originally wanting to do that, it's so that we get an accurate picture of what's happening so that we can make a good decision about what happens next.
Leonard.
So I'm glad Chief Share is here. Chief, do you have any idea whether there have been more or fewer complaints since 2018 about RVs in the right of way? I know you haven't been here the whole time.
I don't have that number, but that's something I could probably pull up and get to you in the next couple of days.
That'd be great. Thanks. I, also the, the, the registration, is that going to be at a cost? Would, would there be a cost to register your?
No.
Public home? Okay. I, I am thinking, you know, with the, in the absence of any kind of data, I, I'm going to guess that this policy, since it institutes a system and a, and, and puts a procedure in place for parking RVs in the town. I'm going to guess that there are fewer complaints about RVs in the roadway. And for that reason, I, I feel like we've got a system in place that's working pretty well. And I'm, I'm for option A right now.
Nice question. Should I go ahead and advance to the question since we're, yeah, just so it's up there and everyone can see them, all the options together?
So do we have any idea how many people are participating, are taking in this program right now?
I don't. It's kind of difficult to assess because even the code complaints isn't necessarily equitable to how many people are using it because you might be getting a lot of complaints about a few people that are struggling to comply and then not hearing about other people. So, no.
So we can't even use the total code complaints as going, it's at least this many people?
To my understanding, no. Based on what code enforcement's told me, it seems like there are a couple areas where it's just kind of repeat complaints.
Damian.
I may have missed this, but I guess my question is, regardless of which option we choose, what if somebody never decides to register? Or anything like that? Like, I mean, do we have the ability? I'm saying that I, I want them to be persecuted, but is there, I mean, what's going to keep somebody from? Like, what if somebody just decide that they don't want to register it? That they're not going to do anything, that they find the radar, so there's no need to register anything? Like, what's the, what's the downside to them not being in compliance with however we decide what compliance is?
So one of the suggestions that staff has under option B is to update the guidelines. And so that would allow code enforcement to, when they go out and respond to an RV, if it's not registered, to tell them that they need to register. But then if code enforcement isn't interacting with folks, then it's kind of like how it is now. If it's complaint-driven, then there wouldn't be any reason for them to register necessarily if they chose not to and didn't have interaction. They wouldn't be in compliance, but.
I guess another question would be what, how do you, how do we define temporary?
So I just asked Sandy about that. So temporary housing is, RVs are not a permanent dwelling in the building codes. So that's what makes them temporary housing.
No, I mean like time period.
Time period. So this was put in as a resolution by council. So temporary is up to council.
What was it, the fall of 2020?
Yes.
Damian, did you have anything else? Joe.
So actually, that brings out some good points, why I am very supportive of registration. So we can really figure out, at least get a close guesstimate as to how many RVs are out there parked on private lands. And also gives us an opportunity to contact those folks and make sure that, that they are compliant with our, our code. And secondly, I think it'd be an opportunity when they register that I would like to have those folks asked if they are being charged to be there. I think that, my guess is that, that that's going to be significantly abused. And this code was put in place specifically so that no charge for those folks to park on those people's lands are being imposed. And that we did allow to assist with utility bills, not pay them in full, but to assist them with utility bills. And I think that's where the crux is going to be, is that I have a feeling that, that we got a lot of RVs parked and the property owners there are taking advantage of those folks just because they don't have a place to go. So I strongly support registration and plus as my esteemed colleague Damian Pitts indicated or questioned that, you know, what type, what type of enforcement do we have? Is there, you know, what, what's the enforcement element to this? And I think having that registration system in place, just like you had mentioned earlier, that's the only way we can do it. So I think it opens up an opportunity for us to find out more about the conditions those folks live in there. If they're being abused in a sense of being charged rent with this code, our code, temporary code specifically states they cannot be charged rent. And if, I'd like to see those people in a position where if they're not charged rent, then that gets them financially in a position to where they can move out of that temporary situation into more permanent housing, which was the thought process behind us in the first place.
Steve.
I think you're referring to option B, which is, they talk about 20 hours of staff time on it. Right now, Joe's pushing it way further now. I'm, I'm for A. It's not broken yet. I, maybe, we may have complications. We'll have to address it later. But right now, what I'm sensitive to is staff time. You know, what can we dedicate staff to, which is important. And I don't think this is that big of a deal right now. One other question I have on B, and that is registration. If I have an RV on my property that's not occupied, just stored there, do I have to register it?
No, so that wouldn't be applicable.
Okay. So I, I think we're kind of getting to a point where we got crossroads when, with this program, right? Like, the, the big question, this is why I'm behind, this is why I'm behind B, is we've got to get some sense of how many RVs that are actually out there and how big, how well, wide this program's actually used. Because that's going to allow us to do a couple of things, right? Like, one of them is decide whether or not this is a temporary program that is going to sunset or decide what, what it's going to take to make this into a permanent program. And I think that's, that decision we should make. Otherwise, we're going to keep punting this question down the road. And that's the, that's the question that's really from, underlying this. So I'm for B. I, I want to make sure we get some sort of good data around, like, what are these used for? How many people are still using them? Like, is the mix changing from the, from the Holiday Farm Fire? And then we can pick it, then we can pick it up in the, you know, sort of the spring and kind of answer some serious questions. And give the staff kind of a direction about, okay, what do we actually do long-term here? The other question that I think, or I guess the comment that I really have, I'm not as concerned with RVs that are on private property. And I know this is a policing issue and I just, I guess want to flag it. Like, I am really concerned with the amount of RVs that we have in non-habitable spaces, you know, that are in the public right of way. Because when people are in the public right of way, that is dangerous. We, we continually see people get hurt doing that. And I'm, that, I know that's kind of adjacent to the, to the question that we've got, you know, at hand. But I think there is a difference between RVs that the police are sort of responding to that are in the public right of way and then places where we maybe have taken a permit or instilled a registration system. And then they're actually on, you know, off the street someplace. Right.
Anyway, and being on the streets, I don't think it should be there. I think somebody should make a deal with them. They can park them somewhere, but not, not on the street.
Leonard.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, is there a way, if we're going with option B here, to implement Counselor Pishanary's idea of asking them whether they're actually, whether they're actually being charged when they're in the space that they're occupying?
So that was a question, a follow-up question I was going to have for council was, if I heard any direction on like specific elements that council would like to see in a registration?
All right, Cory, and then we'll come back to Pish.
I think if there's a registration, there could be a form that folks fill out and that could be one of the ques, I mean, again, it's, it's on a bit of an honor system regardless.
Yeah.
But those are the kind of questions we could ask.
Yeah, right. Your vision of this would be sort of an online form and you would sort of prompt people to go and register if you're doing this, right?
Yeah, or it could be printed and then we could fill out the online if it were mailed in.
Okay. Joe.
Yeah, thank, and 20 hours staff time is a drop in the bucket. I mean, I, I think actually it's maybe a little bit conservative, but this is worth the time. I don't want to see people out there getting abused and scalped for, for rent. When, when the, the way it's written, it's absolutely ripe for it. And secondly, I think it makes sense to get that information. I think we need that information as, as much as we can to get a handle on this. Again, this is another one of those programs. It's a semi-private program that looks like it, you know, the way staff is working on it, the way it's been cruising along is, is making its way to be permanent. And, and I'm not, I don't support this as being a permanent code. Either way, I think it makes sense to do some sort of registration so we can at least get a handle on it.
Okay, so would it be helpful for us to give you some ideas or quite other questions that we would love to hear in a registration program?
Well, just if there was anything specific other than that.
I think the rent program was one of them. Does anybody have any, any other specific questions?
Yes. I think it would be helpful to know, again, just sort of setting ourselves up for decision-making in the spring, whether folks consider themselves to be, whether they're displaced from the fire still or they consider themselves to be residents of Springfield and plan to stay in Springfield. I think that would also help us to understand, like, what kind of housing needs do we really have? Or are folks here temporarily still displaced?
Leonard.
There were a couple of other standards for compliance that are listed, like you should have access to an electrical hookup and to water. And I, I don't see any harm in asking them if they got that too. I mean, if there's no objection from council.
Okay. So, and then you're coming back in the springtime and then we're going to have a, probably a longer conversation about this program at that point.
Yes, around May, I think.
Okay. That, that definitely works. Does anybody have anything else before we let Katie go? All right. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
That is our one item and we are going to adjourn until seven o'clock. We are adjourned. Always like to thank the recording lady. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pishanary.
Here, thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourself on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request card to speak located at the council entrance and give it to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone in, in person in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised their virtual hand. And Neil, could you let us know how many people are joining us this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have approximately 19 attendees online and about 32 here in the council chambers.
We're, we're going to check his count later. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is the Springfield upbeat, item number one, mayor's recognition Springfield Heritage Award. And Mayor, this is your item.
I got to come down to the podium. It's like, join me down here at camera two. So the Springfield Heritage Awards is a new award program. This award program is from the Springfield Historic Commission in collaboration with the Springfield History Museum. The awards are to recognize the significant achievements and stewardship of the physical and cultural heritage of Springfield, Oregon. These awards recognize a broader array of stewardship activities that increase awareness, appreciation and support of an inclusive perspective of local heritage. There's two award categories. Preservation Excellence Award and the History Maker Award. While the Preservation Excellence Award will focus on the projects such as historical preservation, restoration or research, the Historical History Maker Award will focus on a person or entity that demonstrates leadership and shaping, are preserving and fostering the appreciation of local heritage in the past, present or futures. The nomination from the, from the community included 19 different proposals. All right, I have the award winners here. But I want to just take a moment to sort of recognize, if you were part of the committee or the staff that supported this, it's been a ton of work. Would you please stand up so that we can recognize you? Thank you. And the other part that I thought was really important for this was that it really was a collaboration between the museum committee and the historic committee. And that's something that we've talked about for a long time, is sort of committees talking together and sort of supporting each other. And it produced this beautiful award project. So I've got the description for everybody written up here. But I'm going to actually invite, invite them up one at a time so they can stand up here while I say great things about them. The first, the first thing, first, the group of awards is the History Maker Award. All right. So Dottie Chase, could you come up here and join me up here? So I will, everybody knows Dottie. But this year in 2022 marks the 20th anniversary of the Emerald Empire Art Association, becoming a nonprofit 501(c) visual arts organization in the grand opening of the Emerald Art Center home on the corner of Fifth and Main, which is one of the earliest parts of our downtown renovate, renovation. Dottie Chase has been a board of directors for the EEAA for over four decades. She won't say exactly how many decades, though. Her expertise in fundraising, community relations, business management, special events, have endeared many community leaders to support the art center. Dottie continues to embody the Emerald Arts Association's mission to provide an opportunity for all of those who desire to create art and exhibit their work by cultivating a vibrant art community through education, outreach and partnership. She is a guiding light in this community, a source of endless ideas for encouraging visual and performing arts in Springfield. Springfield has greatly benefited from her philosophy that we citizens can do more than we think we can. And indeed, we are called to do all that we can do to support our community, no matter the hill that must be complying, climbed. She really is a force of good in this community. So notable accomplishments include spearheading the installation of the Oregon Trail mural, instrumental in getting the Simpsons mural installed on the Emerald Art Center building. And in 2019 and 2020, she chaired the mayor's gala. So I've got this beautiful thing right here. One of my favorite things about meeting and talking with Dottie is everybody just walks away energetic about whatever we're talking about. And anybody who goes, goes out of her way always sort of has a smile and always has kind of a list of stuff. has a smile and always has kind of a list of stuff that's gotta be done and, and a timeline to make sure it's done, to make sure Springfield goes forward and it makes every time you, you support this community so special to us all. So congratulations. Be careful, they do fall apart. This is gonna be fun. All right, as we continue with the History Maker Awards, I don't know who the, from the Kalapuyia Talking Stones Committee is actually here. I think represent, oh, come on up. You gotta come. So the Kalapuyia Talking Stones were designed as an educational and cultural reference point as well as to be a beautiful art objects. The fifteen boulders, of the fifteen boulders, five are located in the forty, forty-six acres of the park that are in Springfield. The word Wheelamut means where the river ripples and runs past. Some linguists theorize, theorize that Willamette may have been derived from a Kalapuyia word. Before the Talking Stones, the Kalapuyia heritage was largely hidden in this community. The purpose of the Talking Stones project was to revive the Kalapuyia language and honor indigenous culture. In 2003, the first eleven Talking Stones were placed in, in honor, to honor traditional Kalapuyia stewardship of the land. In 2011, four additional Talking Stones were placed sponsored by the Oregon Department of Transportation is mitigation work for using the park to construct the Willamette I-five Bridge. The Talking Stones project is ongoing. The CPC and the people from the native community have been approached about extending the, expanding the Talking Stone project as an educational, as educational institutions and other parks or on private property. The Talking Stones' power and presence has been, has built upon countless volunteer hours for decades from people who should be acknowledged because they are willing to work hard, take risks and stand up for recognition and respect of the Kalapuyia peoples. So we've got this. Should I give you the right one? All right, we're gonna stand over here. Well, somebody, we will, we promise we will get you the pictures. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, I was gonna be in charge of this. You saw what I did. All right, we're, we are going to move on to the Preservation Excellence Award and in seven, four, five, the folks from seven, four, five C Street, are they here? Oh, come on up. You may have to help me with your name is Saleah Meyer?
Ah, Saleah.
Saleah Meyer. This home was built in 1910 with materials and craftsmanship from that era. As a first-time homeowner with a family history of restoring and appreciating historic homes, the owners wanted this house to stand for another hundred and ten years by using materials from 2020 to showcase the quality of historic materials from 1910. Restoration was the first priority and enduring theme for the duration of the project. The aims was to maximize the use of original materials and play homage to respecting the fact that most, if not all of the wood found in this home was milled in the forests around Springfield, taken by railroad to be milled in Springfield. Every decision was made in order to show that respect and difference to the history, high-quality materials and heritage of this home and neighborhood. And before I hand out your award, I, I can tell you one thing that really jumped out to me about the, about this nomination is the work you guys did was absolutely, was absolutely gorgeous. And when we talked at the committee level, the one thing that jumped up out in the architects was sometimes historic restoration is really hard and, and not necessarily the most fun, right? And to recognize somebody who clearly had a passion for this as a project and then have, and then have the home come out so beautifully, it just really a privilege to say thank you and congratulations.
I really appreciate it. Thanks.
And if you want, you can, these can be affixed to your home. All right, we only got two more to go. So Bonnie, could you come here for a second? So the Chamber of Commerce Building. The Springfield Chamber of Commerce worked with local businesses and community partners to complete the interior and spatial improvements and technology upgrades to the Springfield Business Visitor Center at the Historic Depot. These modest but impactful improvements to the interior space were completed by the business community for the community in honor of the business's heritage and preservation of our community's quality of place assets. They exemplify the spirit of revitalization in downtown, uplifting the business, the building's presence both as a cultural asset to the city and as a, as a home to the chamber. The final product accumulated in a hundred thousand dollar investment for the building interior improvements, new equipment and user amenities. Let's make sure we get you the right one. This, this building looks absolutely beautiful and every, we go down there and talk about this business, the business community, it's so great to see a modern chamber and, you know, a place to work and sort of gather and celebrate business. Congratulations. Thank you. John Davis, I feel like the price is right. Come on down. This is for the Laurel Grove Cemetery Revitalization. Over the past ten years, the Laurel Grove Cemetery Board members and volunteers from the community, including members of the Springfield Rotary, have been maintaining the grounds of the cemetery. For much of its existence, the cemetery was not cared for at all. The land was allowed to become wild and ma- and many grave sites and markers were lost. The board has worked diligently to right these wrongs through proper maintenance and comprehensive research and documentation of the cemetery's history. Through this revitalization work, we are able to celebrate the importance of history of the resting place of the founders of Springfield, preserve monuments, increase accessibility and community awareness of this important site. So this, this is one of the things that, that really makes Springfield special. There's so many people in this community that do, just quietly do things, right? Quietly go out and take, and take care of a cemetery, quietly invite the museum down to teach you how to do it and to see that kind of partnership. Care for historic assets really, really exciting. Congratulations. All right, thank you, everybody. Congratulations to the winners and thanks again to the folks that helped organize this. All right, folks, we're gonna give you guys a minute. You're perfectly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we do understand if you have a better offer.
Very interesting.
Maybe next time we should hold the award, like, tell them, right? Like, but you have to be present to win.
At least it's your business from the audience.
Take care.
All right. It's great to see people in city, in the city council chambers. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is the consent calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendar. Neil, could you call the vote?
Yes, councillor Pitts.
Aye.
Councillor Mo?
Yes.
Councillor Rodley?
Yes.
Councillor Stare?
Aye.
Councillor Woodrow? And Councillor Pictionary.
All right. Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes, one absent. Next item, please.
Uh, next name is public hearings. You have one public hearing tonight, a sidewalk cafe permit and open-air dining license fee adoption. This is resolution number two, a resolution amending the master fees and charges scheduled to amend the fee for sidewalk cafe permits and to add a fee for open-air dining licenses. Sam Kelly Quatroki is here for the staff report.
Did I miss my introduction?
Yes, it was wonderful.
Thank you so much. My apologies. Traffic's rough up here, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So yes, I'm Sam Kelly Quatroki. I am once again here tonight with a quick, hopefully, master fees and charges amendment looking to a pass or not pass a resolution amending the master fees for the sidewalk cafe permits and then to add a fee for open-air dining licenses. Uh, back in May sixteenth, when I came forth with the rest of master fees and charges, you were still on your first of two readings for an ordinance that actually amended both of these fees and had implications for their passing. So rather than passing one, wait for the ordinance to pass and then come pass the second one, we waited until the fall to pass them both together. So these are both very similar and their fee structure includes that, a two hundred dollar fee for the first inspection and then a hundred dollar renewal fee for every reinspection for every two years. At this time, seeking a public hearing and then I'm happy to answer questions from council members.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have any cards. Are there any hands raised, Neil?
Uh, Mayor, it does not appear we have any hands for this item.
And I'm gonna close the public hearing.
I make a motion now we adopt uh, resolution number three.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Mo, seconded by councillor Pictionary. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, councillor Pitts?
Aye.
Councillor Mo?
Yes.
Councillor Rodley?
Yes.
Councillor Stare?
Aye.
Councillor Woodrow? And Councillor Pictionary.
Aye.
Uh, just to clarify, that was resolution number two, if you're keeping track of it.
Well, let's see.
I think there was a typo in the motion.
It says two and three, so you have to do anything.
Resolution two, and then it says down below adopt resolution number three, so that's, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm going, so, yeah. Do you want us to read it again?
Why don't you just read it again? That'd be clear for the record.
So I will, I moved that we adopt resolution number two.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the vote?
Yes, councillor Pitts?
Aye.
Councillor Mo?
Yes.
Councillor Rodley?
Yes.
Councillor Stare?
Aye.
Councillor Woodrow and Councillor Pictionary.
Aye.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes and one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
I do not have any cards. Um, are there anybody raising their hand?
It appears we have no hands for this item.
Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city council?
Yes, sir. Is councillor Rodley?
Thank you. Um, I just want, on last Friday, I went to the graduation of the EMS Academy Number One for the Eugene Springfield Fire Department. There were ten individuals and by academy number one, this is the first cohort of single role EMS, which Emergency Medical Services, folks that have graduated from this program and it was, it was a packed house. It was very moving and also just, I wanted to just share my appreciation for the pivoting of this. I know that it, it has taken a little bit of work and the idea behind it is to, to shift the, so that we have more EMS folks who can respond when folks call nine-one-one because the, the, what we need from our first responders is changing and evolving. And so I just was happy to be there to support some of these folks who are at the beginning of their career. Some of them are somewhere in the middle and also they are at the beginning of their career with Eugene Springfield Fire. So I just wanted to call it what a wonderful thing it was and how excited I am to see as we're making adjustments for better, more personalized service to meet our evolving needs.
Uh, councillor Pitts?
Uh, yes, I mean, this is kind of late, but I wanted to give a uh, a special thank you to councillor Mo. Uh, for those who don't know, the University of Oregon does a summer academy to inspire learning and I just so happen to run the business school one. And this year we focused on, uh, Glenwood redevelopment and we had fourteen ninth through twelfth graders who embarrassingly figured out the, uh, the Glenwood redevelopment before we did, but councillor Mo came and his breadth of knowledge and his, uh, ability to connect with students and just really get our youth uh, engaged and excited about seeing something new within the city of Springfield. There were some actual Springfield students there. I mean, it was just great. It was probably one of the most well-received presentations that we had and so uh, and so th- this is what, uh, community action looks like. And so I just want to really, uh, give a shout out to our councillor Mo.
You asking me to speak to your class is one of the greatest things that's ever happened to me. Thank you very much.
Leonard?
Uh, can we entertain a motion on the Glenwood redevelopment now that it's been? I, I, I really just wanted to, um, say that the Safer, um, had a ceremony over the weekend where they gave Commissioner Barney a Concerned Citizen Award and unscheduled were awards to Johannes Tadeo and to Marion Malcolm, who have been longtime members and organizers for Safer and it was just a really positive occasion. There was live music from a young singer named Miguel. It was fantastic.
This is one thing that I really noticed in, in, in the last week. We have gotten into the fall and there are a lot of community acti- activities. There were probably, uh, probably at least three a night going through the weekend, which says something to really this community coming alive and coming together to, you know, join each other. Any other business from the council? All right, next item, please.
No items from the, no business from the city manager tonight, but we have, uh, items from the business from the city attorney. Item number one is oath of office code update. This is ordinance number two, an ordinance amending Springfield Municipal Code, section two point two eight five regarding taking of the oath of office by elected and appointed city officers. Christina Kraz is here for the staff report.
Hello, Mayor and Council, and Mary Bridget is in person obviously tonight to answer questions as well. This, uh, ordinance is this first reading only. There's no public hearing. The purpose of this is just to update the Springfield Municipal Code so that the oath of office is a little more modern and matches um, the style of the oath that has actually been administered. Um, currently, the Springfield Municipal Code has some outdated, um, very legalistic sounding language, and so we wanted to update that to be formal but modern. Um, and we're using the League of Oregon Cities sample language um, for, uh, the proposed amendment. Uh, quick overview, this is the oath of office that say councillors take at the beginning of their term at the first meeting in January and then city officers also take an oath. Doesn't have to be administered in a public setting, but generally the council, the council does that at their first meeting in public. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, nothing further on this one tonight.
Is there any questions? Okay, um, this was first reading, no action required tonight. Next item, please.
Your next item is item number two, the parliamentary procedure code change. This is ordinance number three, an ordinance repealing Springfield Municipal Code, section two point zero eight zero regarding parliamentary procedure and Christina Kraz is here for the staff report.
Thank you. And this is the second cleanup item. This is, uh, sort of a it's long been a pet peeve of mine that the municipal code references Robert's Rules of Order Revised Edition, which is the nineteen seventy-one version specifically. Um, there's actually no need for this section of municipal code because the charter requires the council to adopt your operating policies and procedures and review those annually and the rules of procedure, including Robert's Rules of Order are spelled out in that operating policy and procedure. And just for quick info, this is, my filter's not gonna pick it up very well, but this is my Robert's Rules of Order Revised Version. I, um, you cannot buy these online anymore. You can only get used copies. So I actually inherited a copy of it from a family member. Um, there are pages falling out and so this will be appreciated mostly by the city attorney's office who can buy new versions of Robert's Rules of Order when you next update your council operating policies and procedures. And this is no public hearing, just a first reading. So unless there are questions, there's nothing else on this one.
So that is really the nineteen seventy-one revised edition?
Correct.
All right, any questions about this one? All right. Um, no, first reading, no action required and hopefully you can donate that one to the museum. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city attorney?
Uh, no, no other business.
All right, that is it for the evening. We are going to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.